I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you'd please join me in the pleasurable agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We will now move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask everyone to join me in a brief moment of silence in memory of Oscar LeBrack, age 83. Oscar served as a crossing guard for us starting last school year at Swanson Road Intermediate School, and he passed away September 21st after a very brief battle with cancer. He was much loved by the students and staff there. He leaves five children, 10 grandchildren, and numerous great-grandchildren, having been predeceased by his wife of 45 years in 1997. So if you would, please. Thank you.
Do we have other special recognitions?
We do. On a happier note, Melody Sanchez, you may have seen it posted on Facebook, and I believe it was a story in the Auburn News Daily as well. She was a student in Mrs. Bylin's fifth grade class last year, and they were all asked to write a formal letter to an inspirational or inspiring person. She wrote hers to President Barack Obama, and just a short time ago, she received a nice response from him and his family with some photos. So John Anderson of Auburn Miss Daly went over Mrs. Bylin, as well as Mrs. Lopez and Mrs. Nikopoulos, one of the guidance counselors, went over. So it was a nice honor and surprise for Melody, so we congratulate her.
Excellent. Congratulations.
It makes that lesson well worth it, doesn't it, when you get a response like that?
Yeah, that's pretty good. Well done. Seeing no citizens' comments, we will move right on to the student representatives' report. Good evening. Who's going first?
So this past weekend was homecoming weekends. Despite the not as good weather as we planned for, still good turnouts, all of the games. A lot of fundraising was done for different organizations. Senior class brought in a good amount of money. A lot of wins as well, the ball team won, I know that, field hockey as well. And other than that, not too much else going on.
Just to recap on what Jake had talked about last meeting, the David Roder Memorial 5K is coming up October 16th. So if you have time, if you want to sign up and walk, run, or go and support others, there are a lot of teams and clubs participating from the high school who are going to be volunteering. It's going to be a good thing.
Excellent. And that's it for the report? Very well done. As always, at any point in this meeting, if you want to get up and get to that five hours of homework that you speak of, or two and a half for Jake, or however it works out for you, yeah, feel free to leave. Don't feel guilty about it, because we know that you're busy and try squeeze a lot of activities until one day. So whenever you're ready, feel free. And thank you for that report. We now move on. I seek approval of the minutes of September 21st.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote. Now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item we've been asked by Town Hall is, we always do it this time of year, to create a CIP for, we always say five years up, for 2022, as well as look at the CIPs that are currently in place. So what you have before you, and this work actually started with Mr. Fahey and Mrs. Worzwicki going in meeting with principals with regard to 2022 specifically. So what you'll see actually in these three years, as you know, and these are tentative at this point, but with the installation of the modular at Bryn Mawr School, we will need to install a sprinkler. And the very rough estimate around that is approximately $300,000. So we tried to keep in mind new projects that we need for 2022, and also look to, particularly with Mr. Fahey's expertise, to look and see if there were any projects currently slated that could get moved out later to satisfy the need for the sprinkler. So if you look to, it's actually second in your packet, FY18. So the installation of the generator at Bryn Mawr School, rather than doing it in 18, that has now been moved to 2022, and we've allowed there for sprinkler system installation. It will actually be completed by FY19, if you go to the next page in red. Fortunately, we're in good shape with our HVAC work at the Bryn Mawr School, actually a little ahead of schedule. So being able to put the sprinkler system listed there, and then removing the ADA playground equipment to 2022 as well. We actually, in looking, we've got a sum of money available in 17 for that. You will have it in 22, and you'll also see that it's in 18 as well. There's a $50,000 amount specified for some upgrades to playground equipment. Other changes that we made to the 19 CIP, as you can see, we noted there for you to know, any items that were taken off have just been displaced to a later year, so to 2022. So the ADA playground equipment in each of the schools noted, and then the interior door upgrades, again in an effort to identify those money for 2019. And just to remind you, so you are, hopefully will be approving the 2022 tonight, which was sent to the town, and we also send with your approval the revised 18 and 19 CIPs. 17 we're in currently, the 20 and 21 remain untouched. Each year, you have the opportunity to make revisions and modifications to these, and quite honestly, in most years we have, because as needs shift and change, a priority might go more to the top, and then something else that might be able to be moved later. Projecting out five years, for example, for carpet replacement, you know, we project that we may need it in five years from now, but depending on the wear and tear, depending on the maintenance of it, sometimes we can push that off, and sometimes it needs to be sooner. So we did go through this whole process. You'll see that in 2022, it's a higher level than what's noted here in 18 and 19, but primarily that's because we were pushing some things off to be able to accommodate for this sprinkler system. So it is our recommendation that you approve this at this time, with the understanding that if, as needs change, we would certainly bring them back to you for your review and approval.
I would entertain that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Wayne?
Yeah, I just want to know if you really feel comfortable on the install of emergency generator to go to 22.
So through the chair, I would say, I rely very heavily on Mr. Fahey, who has just an outstanding understanding of all of our buildings.
Right.
And anytime we were moving these, he feels very comfortable with that. So that was, in fact, probably his suggestion to move that. Now, if something is to change, we could-
We can change it.
Bring it back earlier, but he's very comfortable with that at this point.
I just want to make real sure, because it's a few years, especially when it's an emergency generator that we're talking about.
Understood.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Through the chair, I actually just had a couple of questions regarding the, regarding moving off the ADA upgrades to the playground. Are we, so my first question is about compliance. Do we feel like, hope pushing this off, it won't jeopardize our ADA compliance in any way, will it?
Correct. We don't believe that it will at all. We were actually able to, just prior to the close of this past fiscal year, able to install appropriate ADA swings and such in our buildings. And we actually, you had approved, may have been now, a couple of years ago, the expansion of the playground area of Packard Chalk School, and we lowered things. And in fact, Town Meeting even gave us a sum of money to do that. So we installed some of those things at that time that we weren't anticipating being able to do. So these are really just to enhance the area, but we feel comfortable that we've got appropriate equipment at all schools right now.
Okay, great. Thank you. That, my second question was about where we are now, and it's something to consider that one, too.
Okay. Great.
Are the HVAC systems already up to par with all the other schools at Bryn Mawr right now?
They are currently.
Okay.
They're in very good shape, and partially that came with some of that Green Community Grant funding that we've been able to take advantage of. So we're significantly ahead of schedule. The only places that we really have left throughout the district, I mean, obviously the middle school is dehumidified. We're actually going to be bringing forward to SBC at an upcoming meeting, because the gym is not. That's the only area in that building. What we're realizing is, the heat is overwhelming in there, so that'll come back before SBC. With the monies that we received back from the high school project, that is fully, has it available in it, and Mr. Fahey sets it up for graduations and such. Swanson Road, but for the auditorium and cafeteria. Packard Chalk, but for the cafeteria slash gymnasium area. And then same with Bryn Mawr, the cafeteria and gymnasium, so we're in very good shape.
All right, great.
Very good shape.
Gail, did you have something?
Dorothy, yes, my question, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
Thank you. The next item, our band students continue to really show tremendous growth, and it was just a few years ago that they participated actually in one of their first competitions, because the Rocket Band is not really that old, relatively speaking. So they are hoping to go to Connecticut for two trips. One on October 15th in Rockville, Connecticut, the U.S. Bands Gold Showcase Competition, and then on November 5th, and these are Saturdays, to Bridgeport, Connecticut for the U.S. Bands Eastern Regional Championships. So it is my recommendation that you approve those.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion, that we approve the band trips.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Yeah.
On the permission slip request form that the teacher filled out, the dates are wrong. One says August 15, and then 11/5. So I assume that's supposed to be 10/15?
Through the chair, those are errors, and it is definitely 10/15 and 11/5.
Okay.
So we will make note of that on here, but I know these are two band trips that are upcoming.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? I would just say that it is great to see how quickly the band has grown and how they're taking part in all these competitions. It seems like it was just, you know, last year, I think it was a couple of years now, but it really seems like they've been around for a long time. It's pretty impressive, and they actually sound pretty impressive. So it's great that they're putting as much into it and willing to go and compete, usually in most cases against other bands that have been doing it for 20 and 30 years, because some schools just have a tradition of that. So for our kids to be willing to step up, makes me very proud.
Thank you.
Wayne?
I would like to agree with you, George, that they've been doing great with these bands, and Mrs. Bailey has been outstanding. I mean, does everybody that's been placed to be a band person, it's definitely her. And she does great with them, and I thank them and the citizens.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
More good news actually to share. Packard Chalk School received a donation of $750 from the State Street Foundation. That's primarily for Amy Faber, who is a very active mom and volunteer at the school. They donated for her in recognition of the time that she donated. So it is my recommendation that you approve that.
That's great. I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the donation to Packard Chalk School in the amount of $750 from the State Street Foundation.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? No? Just a round of thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
Thank you. And as you see in your packet, Mrs. Danny Kessin sent a letter of thanks. The next item is the time of year again to, for you as a school committee to appoint a representative on the John E. and Ethel E. Riley Outstanding Citizenship Award Selection Committee. We had some staff members who volunteer, quite honestly, every year, I think, since we've been asking. Those are them in the order being Doreen Guitar, Jill Spencer, and Denise Collins. In the past, both Mrs. Guitar and Mrs. Collins, I think they've volunteered every year, and they've been taking turns. Mrs. Guitar served last year, so I leave it to you for your consideration. Mrs. Spencer, as noted here, is not an Auburn resident, but I will say that I have served before on this selection committee, and, you know, do I live in town, but certainly have the town's best interests. So it's up to you, you decide though.
So if I remember correctly, Mrs. Guitar was okay with the, every other year, but yet she puts her name in. I think we had a conversation outside of the school committee, and I felt guilty for not voting her in, or the committee not voting her in. She said, "No, that's fine, I just put my name in there," and so she's okay with that.
Mm-hmm, she is.
All right. So.
I would vote for Mrs. Collins, as being a longtime Auburn resident, and it's kind of her turn if we go with that rule.
I would too. I would agree with Gail on that.
So.
Through the chair, I just, to throw this out there, because I don't know how much this would matter, do we want, do we want, I guess, fresh blood? Do you be interested in having someone who hasn't ever served on the committee to be involved?
I would like-
So that, because eventually it should be other two that don't want to serve on the committee, not want to do it or not be able to do it. Do you want someone familiar with the process? Again, I don't know how much it matters if you are familiar with the process or not, so I'm kind of throwing it out there.
Gail?
My thinking would be, when the time comes, that we need someone that has to be new to the process, then that's soon enough.
Wayne?
I would just like to see somebody that is from Auburn to do it, and that's my opinion. I just think it should be Auburn.
Okay. My opinion is that, I hate, I hate saying no to anyone who's willing to volunteer for anything, so it's a very difficult decision. And I would go in any direction that the board is comfortable with. So I would entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Denise Collins to serve as the educated representative on the Riley Award Committee.
I have a second there.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote. And again, thank you for volunteering.
Through the chair, we will, as we always do, send letters of thanks for the, to Mrs. Collins as the acuity, but then also to the others for the volunteering at times, so we'll be sure and do that. I wanted to share with you, both Dr. Lozay and I had the opportunity to attend the Chris Heron presentation that took place, we could go yesterday, at Auburn High School, and it was an incredibly moving presentation. Some of you may have seen or read a book, I don't know if either of you, through the chair, if the students want to comment, but an incredibly moving presentation, I think that it's fair to say the students took great, really listened extremely intently during that, to hear this now, no longer a real young man, but in his 30s, I would say, or 40, early 40s, speak about his rise as a, truly an all-American basketball player, and then going on fulfilling what everyone believed was his dream in becoming eventually a Boston Celtic, only to lose it, lose all that, but not his life, fortunately, due to substance and alcohol use and abuse, as he described it. So I think that he made a very strong connection with the kids. I think that they heard him loud and clearly of the concerns about starting that path. But as we all know, and as I wrote about in the Rockets Review that will win the Auburn News on Friday, it's an epidemic that has touched just so many lives, and perhaps every life in one way or another. So I do hope that the students heeded that. I hope that parents took the opportunity to speak to their children about it. And, you know, I mean, it's a commitment that we have in supporting our kids to be safe physically, emotionally, academically, to continue to provide these things and opportunities for discussion. So it was very, very moving, and I appreciate the Auburn Police and Fire both subsidize this, along with the school department, so another example of a nice team effort to support our kids.
Great. Gail?
Was there a chance for the students to ask him questions?
There was. There was at the end, and several of them took advantage of that opportunity. He shared with the guidance counselors and encouraged them to share with students his email. He shared stories about how he'd even shared, you know, his phone number with some in previous programs that he had done, because, you know, what he's, his underlying or overarching message was really, if he can prevent one student from going down the path that he landed on, and fortunately lives to talk about it, that he considers it his responsibility to do. So he's been up to a lot of the local school districts. I think he indicated he does this 200 or 250 times a year. And it was easy to see how emotional it was for him, particularly when he talked about students that he had met, you know, so it was a very moving, very moving.
Jake, Isabella, any comments? Did you, were you both able to attend?
I unfortunately was not able to attend, but from what I heard, this presentation had a much stronger impact on the student body than previous presentations had. A few people have been saying that presentations that come along are usually redundant, but this one kind of had a stronger message to it, and, you know, put a face to the issue and the resolution, so.
Very well said. Jake, Isabella?
His story was very powerful, and he also shared stories of children he had talked to personally after he had presented at their school, and it was kids just like us going through things that, you know, I'd never even imagined, but it was really moving to hear, and it was just a great experience to talk about.
That's great. Maybe we'll have to have him back a few more times.
Yeah.
So was it for the whole student body, grade 9 to 12?
It was at the high school, yes.
Okay.
Yes, the whole student body, and, you know, I mean, there's a fairly substantial fee for it, because it was consideration as to whether, you know, to do an evening program, and it wasn't to be this year, but I think that's the other piece of this, is the student component, but also the parent component, and things to look for. What we did along with this is Ellen Miller from the District Attorney's Office actually did, had tables set out there this week at Auburn Middle School for open house tomorrow night at Auburn High School, hidden in plain sight, to really try and help the parents understand, you know, what to look for, what to watch for, what might some signs be of this happening, because, you know, as Mr. Heron spoke about, I mean, people looking at him would have believed he had everything, you know, he, that full-boat scholarship, he was widely acclaimed in Fall River, Massachusetts, which is where he grew up. But he didn't, you know, and he felt this pressure, which caused him to go down this path. But, so I think the piece with that, the parental component, I think with this, we just keep driving that message home to students, that, and we are here to support them, so.
Great. Gail?
Do we have anything that we use at the middle school level to get the same kind of message, or the beginning of that message scattered?
So we are looking at some programs around that. There was one that was recommended, Mr. Gaggen, and actually, School Resource Officer Kennedy are going to go and observe and see to be sure that it's appropriate. We also have been outreach by an alum of Auburn, who is now a pharmacist with CVS, and CVS has actually created a program, and he'd like to come out, so we're actually, Dr. Lozay and I will be sharing that with Mr. Gaggen. Mr. Hanfield, I sent them some preliminary materials, because so much of it seems to be around prescription medication. We've posted on our website, you know, and it's just, it's a topic of discussion across all, education, medical, and posted a lot of things on our website too, available, you know, for parents and students, and the best thing is to get them to never try it.
Right.
You know, with the addition of those.
Wayne?
I would just like to say, I'd like to thank you students for bringing us back and giving us your report on this. And, you know, sometimes we don't understand it, but sometimes when it comes from somebody like the students, it makes a big difference and a bigger impact. It made an impact on you two students, so we know that it's going to make an impact on other students, and these are the kind of programs we like to keep moving forward with, and helping out our students. And then if you see the ones that are less accomplishing anything, then we can probably get off of those and move into, as better programs, even with the cost and everything else, we can just cover that by programs that are not quite working. And I want to thank you very much for your report.
Thank you. Any comments?
One more comment through the chair. Yeah, I would like to see it as an after-school program too, where parents can also, because a lot of times those conversations that come up at school don't always make it home. And I know I ask my kids every day what they did in school, and I get nothing, so, and my kids are young, but, I mean, even the middle school, you know, having the parents more involved and maybe post something like that again, you know, next year after school hours would be beneficial as well.
I agree.
I agree. That would make for a great ride home, great conversation. That's the time to actually nail it, is right after the fact. And I think it's a great thing. I saw the movie, and wow, no one had any idea how bad he was, because he continued to play great basketball and act fairly normal, yet he was really under the influence the majority of the time, so. Great story. Someday I'd like to see the speech myself. And just to piggyback on what Wayne said, you guys are just doing a phenomenal job. The confidence, and you speak so eloquently, it's great. It's great to have you aboard.
So don't ever think you're sitting there and you're not accomplishing anything. You are accomplishing a very lot.
You're making us proud, that's for sure.
And giving us the knowledge.
All right, moving on.
Just wanted to share with you, I continue my work with the Early Literacy PM. Just received a new, a fresh appointment through the Executive Office of Education through Mr. Pizer, so that term continues through 2020. So I will continue to keep you apprised. We've not yet met this year, but we have a meeting upcoming in just a few weeks. The October 1st counts, as you can see, what I had noted here in the packet, if you look at this form here, we actually have, per this, 66 new students for a total of 2,520 students. They're broken down by grade level, with boys and girls, boys first, and then girls listed second. In a time when many areas, school districts are having flat enrollments or even declining, it's pretty impressive that we have increased our numbers here, so I wanted to share that with you, and it should be reflected in our Chapter 70 monies that we get for FY18 as well.
Any comments?
Yeah, it's great to see the preschool numbers rising as well. That's such a great program over there. I've heard so many good things about it, so.
It's great.
Kudos to the team making that happen.
Yeah, that, as well as the numbers, as you said, at all levels, it really speaks to what we're doing here. There are a lot of other options between the private schools, the Catholic schools, and vocational schools, and for that many kids to stick around here right through high school, it's, that's great. So thank you all for your hard work. We now move on to unfinished business.
We reserve, so Mr. Page is going to serve as the school committee rep for the custodian contract. The secretaries and IAs are likewise open, as noted in here, between Mrs. Worzwicki, Dr. Lozay, and I, we're happy to handle these, but if a school committee rep would like to be part of them, we would be more than happy to have you as part.
Moving on.
You know, I know, you're looking at me, I think it's fine if they do it and just report back, rather than try to, rather than try to work out a schedule for three people, and being one who doesn't like to get up in the morning. Oh, honesty.
Or traveling. Okay.
Or traveling, that's true.
I'll answer that question. Now, I'll be-
I'm sure it's some good IAs without me.
The next item is actually with regard to, question two, you had asked me to put together some information here for you, and I would point out to you regarding the charter school issue. We have made a concerted effort. To Mr. Scobie's point, I think that we have a great program here in the Auburn schools. I think you can see by the declining enrollment, in our current projection for FY17, the current year is 12 students that we have in place there, and you can see that there is the letter that we've sent to families in the past encouraging them, not only those who are in charter school, but in a private school, or even homeschooling. them, not only those who are in charter school, but in a private school or even homeschooling, along with our brochure, welcoming them to come in and take a tour and to consider our school. But with question two available as indicated last time, we did put in here a draft resolution that you should have at your seat that includes information regarding the cost or monies that we don't actually get as a school district with these students not being part of our district. So Mr. Kuchar, the director of the MAS C has indicated that it is certainly fine to do so. And at last count, there were over 155 school committees that had taken this or a similar resolution.
Any final questions?
Yeah, through the chair. I think these numbers need to get onto social media. There's a lot of parents who don't know how to vote, so I think somehow we need to, you know, get this public and so people know going into the, into the election and everything, you know, what the, what the facts are.
The other thing, a lot of the ads come out and say, I'm a public school teacher and I think you should vote yes, but they're a public school teacher in a charter school. That's where it's very misleading. And I mean, my experience through 2010 with students that went to charter school, oftentimes after the October 1st count, the parents were told, because the child had special needs or other issues, that, you know, your public school would really serve you, serve you much better. Why don't you go back and then end of October, so they'd come back to us? And I mean, I don't think any student should be a political football where you come to the school and then you get tossed out. You get suggested out. I mean, we take everybody, we want to do the best we can for everybody, and I can't see playing games with a student's life like that. And I saw it happen. I also know that teachers in charter schools do not have to be certified. I know of a person that wasn't even a college graduate and had been to college for two years. And they had gone over there to one of the charter schools in Worcester, I don't know which one, as an IA, and they get made a second grade teacher within, by November. You're not talking about the same caliber of people, you're not talking about the same level of certification or expertise. I'm sure there's good teachers there, but there's no guarantee that they have even met the minimum standards for their teachers. So I'm definitely saying we should vote no on.
I totally agree with Gail's speech. I would like to say that, no, I could say this or not, but I have been involved in the vote no as a school committee member. Because I feel that our schools, if we start giving out 12 charter schools a year, that eventually is going to go up. Not only that, but that's going to take away from our funding. It's not going to give the parents and the town much authority over budgets. It's not going to give much authority over grants because your grants are going to dry up. They can sit there on that commercial and say, it's not going to, but it is. It already has hit Auburn already, the charter schools. And this, it says 158,000, that's about right where I got it, it was more like 150, but, you know, it's there and it's already happening. So next year, if this goes through, it's going to happen more and more, the charter schools are going to get the grants, we're not going to get the grants, and the parents and the children are not going to have a say in anything anymore. At least people can come to our board and talk about our budget, about the way we run the schools. And I don't believe it's right to let all these charter schools take away the great education. I don't, I was only speaking for Auburn because Auburn does very well. I mean, they're going to be a model school as far as I'm concerned, the way they do things, the teachers, the team, part of the school committee, the superintendent. And I think it just, there's no way. And I went Saturday door to door about the vote no question and got very good response in town Auburn because I think they care about the people in the town. The schools taking away the funding. We're not blindsiding them on a commercial that says vote yes, it's not going to hurt. Well, them people that are voting yes, saying it's not going to hurt, it's going to hurt. And the Boston Herald is the one that's supporting vote yes, they're wrong. They're just wrong. And I think the Sun is another one that was voting, was supporting it, they're wrong. They need to talk to the schools. I don't want to make it a political issue. We just want the facts to be put out to the public and the voters in the right way that it should be. We've got enough politicians on all sides of the world that lie every day. I just don't want to see our school education go down the same road as, excuse me, but some of our politicians have. And I please vote no. Thank you.
If I could add?
Gail?
One of the arguments they're saying is there's going to be more money.
Right.
There's not going to be more money. They're going to take, because the state isn't coming out with new money to go with the new charter schools. All they're going to do is take whatever money they normally would give us and divide it up into more. We all know if you have a birthday party and you plan on 10 people and you end up with 35, your cake's going to be tiny, tiny, tiny. And that's what they're going to be doing. And the charter schools don't have to answer to anybody. They have a board they pay for. Whereas if people are unhappy with us, they could be in those seats right now. I just don't like giving money to someone that doesn't have to answer.
As Gail was just saying, the money is just going to dry up. It's all going to go to these charter schools. And the grants that we get eventually are going to be weeded out from the charter schools. So each and every year, you're going to be taking more and more away from our districts. Thank you.
Anything else? I think we covered all of it. I think, I don't think there's much, much left to say on that subject. Well said. Dr. Renell, do you have anything to add?
I don't, no.
No, okay. Moving on.
Are we going to take a, make a resolution on it or?
Looking for a vote on that? Oh, I thought we already voted that last time and we just came up with it.
No.
We got worded. Wayne?
I would like to make a motion with this resolution that we have drawn up against lifting the cap on the Commonwealth charter schools.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next, and I wanted to make you aware of, just to remind you of the Fall Special Town Meeting on October 18th. That meeting is scheduled to start at 7:00 in the Auburn High Gymnasium, excuse me, Auditorium, where it always is held. And typically, we schedule a school committee meeting just prior in case there is any business to conduct. So we've got it open if you would like to, perhaps at 6:30 that evening.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion that we meet prior to the October 18th town meeting at 6:30.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is vote.
I did want to share with you also that I attended the finance committee meeting. Our articles were all unanimously supported. The only one, and they actually held on Article 2 because there are other departmental budgets, thank you, departmental budgets seeking modest increases. So they wanted to wait and I believe they may take the issue up again at their next meeting, which could be on the 18th of October, but there was generalized support for it in the room.
Question? Was that the extra money for the special program or teacher or supplies that we were going to need?
Correct. That is for the additional specialized special educator and support staff number for a new student, yes.
Before we move on to Auburn?
Oh, sorry. I was at the same meeting with the superintendent, but I think the more the discussion was, was the need of the departments, has anybody requested anything? And it was kind of wishy-washy when it came to the board at that time. And then there was, there was a $100,000 stabilization fund increase and there was a APED?
OPEP.
OPEP, okay. And they wanted to add 300,000 to that. But Kim Holstrom had brought up the issue of the needs of other people in any department. So why are we putting this money aside when we have needs now? And why do we keep putting money into these funds? And I know the last time that I had town meeting, I think it was, it was almost like 7 million in the stabilization fund and then the sewer retaining fund was like 400 million. And as Kim said, why do we keep putting this money away and the money in his way and way and way? Why not either help out the departments that need extra things, whether they do or they don't, bring it forward at the next meeting and/or take that money and give the taxpayers more of a decrease in their tax rate? Does that sound right?
Through the, yeah, that does capture, I think, that just in the discussion, it was, what they were proposing was 300,000 for stabilization and 100,000 for OPEP, which is the opposite. Yes, I just wanted to, but that was just in the conversation.
And it wasn't the school issues, more or less?
Any other comments? Just wanted to backtrack, I did forget something I wanted to mention. And just to follow up on what Jesse had said as far as getting the message out there, what do you think would be the best avenue to officially get the message out, the no vote on question two from the school committee? Would we put that on the school website, the school's Facebook page? What do you think would be the?
So I did make a note through the chair of Mrs. Harrington's comment. I just want to check and be sure that with the campaign laws that we aren't doing anything to violate that. I know that it certainly is within your purview of school committee members to discuss it and take a position on it, what you can do, what you wish personally regarding it as well. But just want to check. So we will check and see in whatever way. I know that we cannot expend any school dollars. We couldn't make coffees and send that home, that would be using school resources for that. So I just want to check and see and I can let you know how best we can get that out.
Just for those few thousand people who don't watch the meetings and just like them to know where we stand. And as Jesse said, a lot of them really don't understand it because of the lies that they are on the commercials.
I think you're right, but we've got to really walk a fine line here because, and if, I remember I was reading something from schools out in Boston there, MACA, whatever it is, mass, teachers, thing that we're going to conference?
MAS.
That's it, I'm sorry, thanks. That we cannot use any school resources at all. So I don't know if emails or stuff like that can be done.
I would think not. But I imagine we could, I imagine we could put it on our website.
I don't know if you can or not. But that's a good thing that you look into it.
Let us know what other parameters are there.
Could PTO put something out there or?
So the PTO is independent organization, they certainly could. Each of you, if you had your own, could certainly do that. So we could get it that way. But let me just make sure and we'll get word to you on that.
Okay, yeah, I'll hold off until I get.
Sounds great. Okay, moving on.
The MSBA Accelerator Repair Program, Mr. Fahy and I had the opportunity to meet with Hill International. They've been assigned as the OPM, the owners' project manager, just this past Friday. And both Mr. Fahy and I were very impressed with their professionalism. I think they're going to be great to work with. The timeline that we're trying to keep is for them to put together their full package for submission to MSBA by December, I think, 21st. And that way, we go before the board at their February 17th meeting. Assuming it gets all approvals, then within 90 days, the town meeting would need to approve it. Now, we're bringing forward CIP articles at this upcoming meeting, so we should be in good shape. But town meeting has 90 days, which would actually be May 17th. Town meeting's May 2nd. So we'll need to take a vote to authorize this. So we're in great stead. We went up to Packer Chog on Friday and the gentlemen all went up on the roof. I stayed in the office as it was raining out, but Mr. Fahy led them well, so it's good.
Good idea.
Yes, keep you safe, you're falling off the roof.
Move on to new business.
Wanted to share with you another collaboration we did with the town, all in the name of safety. Mark Mas, who is the emergency management director, former Auburn police officer lieutenant, I believe, he put together a townwide tabletop exercise. We did it at the police station last week and actually Foxburg's police, excuse me, fire chief, Chief Bemis came and presented us with a scenario. We all had to talk through, okay, what would we do? And the scenario was all around a train derailment down in, at the intersection of Milbury Street, Packer Chog, Central and all in that area there. So it lasted for a couple of hours. We did well and she noted how impressed she was, I spoke with Chief Coleman afterwards, that all of us in the room knew each other and knew each other's names and had worked and talked with each other before, but she said she doesn't always see that. So I think we passed, not that there was not, there was no letter grade given, but we passed and all agreed it was a good experience. I just wanted to share that with you. The FY18 budget collaboration, Mr. Greg Desto, he's the superintendent of Dudley-Charleton, outreach to all area superintendents in the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative and wondered if they might be interested in getting together. We share many similar issues as some have mentioned tonight. The pot of funds is, doesn't seem to be growing, but is oftentimes shrinking. So after the collaborative board meeting on October 14th, for all superintendents, I've invited Mrs. Worzbicki as the business manager. And the invitation is open to one or two school committee members, you can't have three, would have to be posted meeting, to attend if you would like to. If that doesn't fit people's schedule, Mrs. Worzbicki and I will certainly report back. But if you have any interest in going, we would welcome you and you can decide now and let me know who they would be.
Do we have any interest in attending that meeting?
Okay.
Anyone else?
I can't think of it.
It'd be interesting to go in, I just don't know about my work schedule, but I'm looking to it.
Well, why don't we say one and one tentative?
Great, thank you.
Question? Was there something like this last year or suggested or? It just kind of seems a little familiar.
I think that through the chair, I think that Dudley-Charleton in the past may have gotten together with a couple of communities with their specific state representatives in attendance, but this is the first time on a wide scale, wider scale for Southern Worcester County that this has happened. There are changes to the public records law. As you know, earlier this year, actually it was late last year, we had a couple public records requests. So Mrs. Jacobson has coordinated a training for us by attorney Shane Rodriguez of Commonwealth Policy Service. And Mrs. Worzbicki and I will attend on October 24th. So just wanted to let you know, as I understand it, is pretty intensive, the changes that they have made, so I will keep you apprised. And then the upcoming events, we've got parent events, curriculum nights, I misspoke, it's not this week, they're next week at Auburn Middle School, Tuesday through Thursday, Auburn High tomorrow evening and Fall Special Town Meeting is upcoming. And as you can see, the Fall Halloween Dance is around the corner and Monday is no school due to Columbus Day.
Okay, we now move on to teaching and learning report.
I want to rearrange your agenda just a smidge and have Park and the MCAS update at the end. I'll just give you two brief updates and then I'll go through some of the scores. The first update is around the educator evaluation. As you know, when it originally rolled out back in 2011, there was a lot of debate around the system as a whole, but more specifically around the teacher-student growth impact. And as we've talked to you before, that our means of measuring that was through district determined measures or DDMs. Auburn, we felt was in a good Auburn, we felt, was in a good place because we had a lot of common assessments across the grades and the subject areas. However, across the state, there's a lot of stakeholders who are concerned by having a teacher impact on student growth rating. So Commissioner Chester has, over the last couple of years, sat with different groups of stakeholders, talked about their concerns. And recently, we heard that he's going to recommend to the Board of Education this in October, that there no longer is a separate rating for teachers' impact on student learning, that in fact, that could be embedded under some of the other standards that teachers are evaluated on. There are four standards that they're evaluated on, so that would fall under some of that. So ultimately, teachers will only get one rating, that would be considered a performance rating, and themselves, as well as their principals, could look at any kind of student growth data that they have with all the assessments we use. So we will hear more in October to see if that actually comes to fruition.
Dr. Lozay, if that is the case, would we be relieving the teachers of whatever testing methods that they had to put forth to satisfy the district-determined measures?
I think the process would look different. We do still have common assessments that we use, and even in our data meetings, we're always looking at student growth. It would just be more embedded under maybe the curriculum instruction assessment standard that we have for teachers, or meeting the needs of all learners standard that we have. So they could bring that as evidence to show that they've met diverse needs in their classroom, that they've adjusted their practice within their classrooms. And principals could also bring that forward and say, you know, this is great student data. What were you doing in your classroom? That was so wonderful, that met all the needs of these kids. So I think, you know, it's a little more collaborative way to look at that.
Very great. Thank you.
And my second update is around the full-day preschool that you mentioned. So as you know, we're really fortunate that we were able to offer a second full-day program this year after starting that first one last year. So within each of those programs, there are 20 students, which was our goal, so that's 40. And then in addition to our integrated preschools, that are two half-day programs, we have a three-year-old half-day program in the morning with two teachers, and a four-year-old half-day program in the afternoon with two additional teachers. There are actually 59 students in those programs, so we really have 79 students, which is awesome within two years, how we've almost doubled our enrollment. We also offer a before-school and after-school program for those students, so parents can drop them off early and pick them up a little later. There are 14 families taking advantage of the morning program, and 12 taking advantage of the afternoon program. I know every time I go over there, I just want to stay, so I enjoy over there, it's just so refreshing. And the other day, Dr. Brunel and I both were talking to a high school teacher, a male, who said, this is just so awesome. You're walking down the hall, and you hear this laughter, you look out on the field, and you see these young preschoolers, like our littlest rocket. So I encourage you to go visit. And those are the brief updates. I'll try to keep the MCAS presentation and Park presentation brief as well. So every year, as you know, we try to give you a few highlights around our scores and what our students are accomplishing. But I always like to caution that this is only one snapshot, and that's why we call it a snapshot. We have lots of data, like I talked to you about in our schools, to ensure that we're making sure that we target our student needs and make them ready for their next grade, and ultimately for college and career. Just a brief reminder, we've gone over this before, that with the new PARK testing, there are five levels. In MCAS, there were only four. Level one is not yet meeting expectations, and it ranges all the way down to level five, which is exceeding expectations. In PARK, with only the four, which was warning needs improvement proficient and advanced, it didn't match exactly. So they had to use an equal percentile linking system to be able to cross over from one set of scores to another. And by doing that, they came up with a transitional composite performance index. In MCAS, it was simply called a composite performance index. So now we have a T in front of it. They also computed student growth percentiles, and again, with that same system, they've come up with a transitional median student growth percentile. So around English Language Arts, I've listed the grades, I've listed their transitional CPI, I've listed their median student growth percentile, and their percentage of level fours and fives. So as you can see from here, our CPIs range from a low of 87.9 or .5 to a 96.6, which are all very strong. Student growth percentiles average is about 40 to 60 is the average range. Most hover, if any is under, it hovers right around the 40, but we have some solidly in the middle and some actually above. The percentage of students performing at the top highest levels, level four and five, pretty impressive as well. Mathematics again, our TCPIs range, it ranges from a low of 64 actually, up to a high of the 93 in Algebra I. And that Algebra I test was given in eighth grade, so that's a pretty significant score as well. Here, our student growth percentiles are kind of broken in half, with some follow, about half of them falling in the average range, and others a bit below that. And again, you look at our percentage of students scoring at the top two levels, and we can see that there's some really strong ones in some areas where we know we have to do a little bit of growing. And just so you know, so the eighth grade test was only given to a small cohort of students who are not in Algebra I. So we had approximately half of our students in Algebra I, and half of our students in Grade Eight now. We did not give the PARK in Science, Engineering, and Technology, we had to stay with the MCAS. So as you look here, that's only given at three grade levels, it's given at Grade Five and Grade Eight, and at the high school, they give the Biology test, and that's actually given in Grade Nine to our students. And because there's nothing to compare that high school Biology test with, there's really no CPI that they can provide. Our percentages of students scoring at the Advanced and Proficient rate, again, the high school, 86%, Grade Five, the 61%, and that is actually up from last year, and the 39%. So I will say here that the middle school science department has been looking at their scores for the last few years. They've actually begun to have vendors bring in different materials that we're getting quotes on, we're examining, we have a rubric to look at it. We just were given copies of the finally adopted science standard, so they're unpacking those as well, to ensure that whatever we do purchase aligns with that. At Grade Ten, they did not take the PARK either, they took an MCAS again, paper and pencil, English Language Arts and Mathematics. Our CPI with ELA at Grade Ten is 97.5, very impressive, with a growth score right in the average range of 42. 94% of our Grade Ten students are scoring at Advanced and Proficient. That's admirable. Our Grade Ten Math, 90.6 for the CPI, a little low on our student growth percentiles, with only 79% scoring at the Advanced and Proficient levels. So Dr. Brunel and I have already met with Mr. Handfield at his request, because he is determined that those scores will go up. Some highlights just across the district I like to pull out. 22% of all of our Grade Three students scored at Level Five in Math. That's, you know, almost a quarter of our students. Grade Four students on the ELA were really strong, 22% of them scoring at Level Five. Grade Five Math was their strength, 22% of them. At Grade Five, again, Advanced on Science, 25% of students score on that. These are really impressive numbers. Oftentimes, you'll see 10%, 12%, 8%. So these are impressive numbers. 26% of Grade Seven students scored at Level Five in ELA. 23% of Eighth Grade students, Level Five in ELA. 45% of Grade Ten students scored in the Advanced in ELA, very impressive. And 45% of Grade Ten students scored in Advanced in Math. So we're proud of these. With that said, there's always room for improvement, right? So these are our current accountability levels. Swanson Road is considered Level One, Auburn Middle School, Level Two, Auburn High School, Level Two, and the district level is Level Two, and that's always based on your lowest leveled school. So we're a Level Two school district, which we were as well last year. And again, we continue to refine what we're doing, to look closely at the areas of need that we see in the MCAS results in the PARK, and everybody's committed to doing better. Just so you're aware, the testing in 2017 will move once again to a different test, which will be the MCAS 2.0. This will be given in all grades three to five for ELA and Math, and that will be taken electronically. They will remain with MCAS for Science, and that will be a paper and pencil test. And there's actually talk about potentially either adding a test at Grade Eleven or moving the Grade Ten competency determination test to the junior year, because they feel like that might be able to show students, give them a little more opportunity to refine all of their skills, and that that will be closer to when they actually go off, either into the workforce or to college, and that would be a closer assessment. So some of our next steps, some of the things that we're finding that are helping to boost some of our scores is our District Literacy Action Plan, which we will continue with. We're going to sustain and expand co-teaching. It seems that our special ed population is slowly rising on their scores. We want to refine our data meetings and interventions for students. Recently, just at the middle school this year, they have a very new intervention program, which people are speaking really highly of, how it's able to target students, so we want to continue to refine a lot of that. We have a new ELA program that we're going to make sure that we fully implement, which aligns very closely to the Common Core. We're beginning to unpack those new science standards. STEM is always a great focus, and it helps students to really connect all of those, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And when they take the science test, they're able to apply all of that. And again, one thing I think we do really well in this district, and we want to continue to do, is really enhance the sharing of best and promising practices among colleagues within buildings and across buildings, and start preparing our students for MCAS 2.0. So if you have any questions, I can try to answer them.
Any questions for Dr. Lozay?
I do. Wasn't our high school Level One ranked Level One within the last two years or so?
It was a Level One school last year.
Last year.
I think when you look at some of those math scores, you can see how we didn't meet the target every year. Even if you perform really high, there's still another target to hit. Gets more and more difficult to do that, but I can assure you that Mr. Handfield is adamant that we'll be back to Level One next year. He's looked very closely at the data.
I have another question, but I don't want to. Don't the students have to reach a certain level on the 10th grade MCAS in order to graduate?
Correct, they need to pass it.
Okay.
That would be proficient or above.
And if they move it to Grade Eleven, that gives them less time to bring it up? Is, I mean, because I thought that's why it was at Grade Ten, so they had two more years to...
For retakes?
For retakes.
I guess that's a good point. They haven't really talked about that in what we've been hearing. I think people think that if you really want to see if students are ready for college, why would you give them a test in 10th grade? So maybe it would make more sense to push it out. The other thought is to give a test in both grades, 10 and 11, just more testing, but...
Yeah. Do we have many students that are going to be having to work on passing the test again because they didn't make the cutoff in Grade Ten?
We always have a few.
A few.
Yep. And we always are able to get them to the point they need to be.
Good, good, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions?
I want to comment, or a question rather. Because the high school's at Level Two, do we receive more state funding because of that?
Level Two does not come with any additional funding at all. So Level Three, you have the DSAC comes in and provides support, but there, there's no additional funding for Level Two.
Thank you for that report, Dr. Lozay. Now, Dr. Brunel, could you just share with the committee, I think I have a fairly good understanding of it, how the categorization happens as far as the levels go, and how we actually need to show improvement, and it's not based on what you, you may have excelled this year and excelled the following year, but if had you not approved, is that correct? And could you just maybe...
It is correct. So as Dr. Lozay had said, that regardless of how high the students perform, for example, she was sharing the Advanced Proficient, I think it's 94% of our students at the Grade Ten for ELA. So 94% of them scored Advanced or Proficient. There's still going to be a target that they need to hit for improvement next year. The closer you get to 100%, however, the more difficult it is actually to maintain that level of improvement. And what they really had done was take, starting year was at Dr. Lozay, and then they looked at the trajectory and said, okay, so if you have 24 points you need to improve over, say, six years' time, well, then you need to show four points, or four percentage points of growth each year. So when you get to that certain level, the closer you get to 100, it makes it that much more difficult. In fact, we saw at least looking locally, that many of the Level One schools, not all of them, at the high school did find that more challenging, particularly those that are really high achieving. So it makes it challenging. But I think primarily, it was the issue with math, and as Dr. Lozay said, I mean, they have dug into that data and to try and figure out why the students, whether it's in the aggregate, the whole, or if it's our high need students, which population are not scoring at that level. So they're working on it hard.
Okay.
Are they finding that math is very different today than it was when I was a kid? So are they finding that the material is not working, like this Common Core material isn't working for our students? Or is it that they're not grasping the concepts, or have they pinpointed the exact problem?
So through the chair, I don't think at this point they've had enough time to really look that hard into the data. You know, one thing that I do want to point out is, even withdrawing to Level Two, still nearly 80%, I think it was 79% of our students at Grade Ten scored Advanced or Proficient on an exam that's challenging. So that isn't to say that we don't want those other 20% to get to that level certainly as well, but I don't know that they've had that amount of time yet to really delve into the data. So we just met with them just on Monday afternoon, and to look at that. So they've got a plan in place, and we'll check back in with them in a month or so, and to see how things are going.
Good luck with that.
I don't think the students, the students know any better as Common Core is all they know, so it's only the parents that are frustrated and don't have the Common Core.
Right, that's a good point, definitely.
Okay, well, thanks again for that report, and I think that's all we have.
It is.
What we do has an executive session.
We do, yes.
Okay, well, entertain that motion to move to executive session.
I make a motion to enter executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23B, Section 7, to comply with Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 34D, regarding 603 CMR 23, whatever that means, Stephen Robinson on the Mass General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23B, Subset 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with non-union personnel.
Wow.
With expression.
You made that paper right out in front of you.
I second that.
No call vote?
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yeah.
Mrs. Hallway?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. Yes. Good night, everyone.